Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is reports of city officers, starting with the mayor, and I have three items this evening. The first, this evening concludes a five-month search process for the next city manager of Lake Forest that engaged myself, city council, citizens, city staff, a municipal management search consultant, and countless hours for all concerned. I am very pleased to introduce Jason Wishe as the new city manager of Lake Forest, Illinois. Jason has 12 years' experience in local government management. For the past four years, he has served as the assistant village manager in Skokie, and prior to that, as the village administrator of Thornton, Illinois, and was a city management intern in Ypsilanti, Michigan. Jason has a bachelor of arts degree from Skidmore College and earned a master's in public administration from Wayne State University in 2007, not far from Ann Arbor, Michigan, where he grew up, the son of two physicians on staff at the University of Michigan Medical School. Resume aside, I believe it fair to say that Jason has impressed all he has met with his intelligence, professional demeanor, his management and leadership style, and so importantly, his good nature and ready sense of humor, all providing an excellent fit for the Lake Forest community, our citizen-led council-manager form of government, and for the city staff organization. Therefore, pursuant to Lake Forest City Code, as mayor, I appoint Jason Wishe as city manager and make the following council motion: To approve the mayor's appointment of Jason Wishe as city manager effective January 28, 2019, and to approve the employment agreement with Jason Wishe. May I have a second?
So move.
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk Boyer.
I do. I thought you said...
I thought I made the motion, but I'll make them vote. I'll second it, too.
He made the motion. Me, too!
I really like this guy.
All right. I think we're doubled up.
Clerk Boyer.
Oh, yes.
Alderman Morris.
Yes.
Alderman Newman.
Yes.
Alderman Rommel.
Yes.
Alderman Reisberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschler.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, APBA, 0-8, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Jason and his high school sweetheart, Jessica, now his wife, are here tonight along with daughter Natalie and son Owen, and I ask them all to come forward for a picture and for Jason to say a few words.
There you go. Perfect.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Why don't you kids sit down?
I want Bob Kyler to come up here.
Well, I thought I could take one with the kids.
You get on one side. I want a picture of you and your chicken to free up here.
That's why I have such a smile on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll try to keep this brief. I know you guys have business to attend to tonight, but I did want to, again, take the opportunity to formally say thank you for this amazing opportunity. It's very important you acknowledge them here, but again, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank my wife and our two children for being here as well. I think them being here to support me tonight is reflective of not just our excitement for the professional opportunity that awaits me to become part of such a premier and prestigious organization, but also about our excitement to join the Lake Forest community, and so we look forward to becoming part of this community and growing in the community in the years ahead. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, mayor and the council, for again affording me this wonderful opportunity. As I said, Lake Forest has a reputation as being one of the premier municipal organizations, and I look forward to working with all of you guys in the months and years ahead to help carry out your vision for the community. It's very moving to see so many members of the staff here tonight, too. I don't know if that's required or not, but it's much appreciated nonetheless. It goes without saying that I am appreciative for the role that many of you played in this process and also for the professionalism that all of you exhibit that I think leads to this organization having such a reputation for excellence within the region. And last, but certainly not least, I want to take the opportunity to thank Bob Kylie as well. Not only are your contributions, I think, to this community and this organization innumerable, but it goes without saying, all that you have contributed to our profession is something that will live on for some time. I don't think I have to tell anyone in this room that Bob is a true giant in the field of municipal management, and truly, it's a privilege to have the opportunity to follow in your footsteps. And I know my official start date isn't until January 28, but I'm excited and ready to get started working, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, the job starts tomorrow, and so I look forward to sitting down with all of you individually and collectively in the weeks ahead, and again, I look forward for the opportunity to working with all of you, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Very welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.[514.09][514.09](APPLAUSE)
My second item this evening is an update on private fundraising in support of the preferred redesign of the North Beach Access Road. I'd like to ask our all-world leader of this endeavor, Prue Beidler, to start the update, followed by some comments by myself, and then Prue's very able co-fundraiser, Jed Morris. Prue.
Thank you. It's always nice to report on a good news story, and that's what this is. I have some remarks prepared, and it's probably this way I'll be more likely to say everything I'm supposed to say, so let me do it this way. Though this community has a long history of public-private partnerships, we generally use them to address long-recognized needs within the community. Often, independent boards are formed to raise private funds to match public dollars dedicated to these partnerships. Mother Nature altered our traditional pattern for the partnerships. The end of June, oversaturation on the bluff after two months of record rainfall caused the sudden slide of the bluff at the north end of Forest Park. While the bluff slide was shocking, we were grateful that there were no injuries involved. For safety reasons, as you know, the North Beach Access Road was closed, and for the remainder of the summer season, the Parks and Rec staff as well as Public Works and forestry staff worked hard to be sure that the beach was available for public use. We took July and August as a city council to determine what our next steps would be, recognizing that our budget did not include operating funds to address such a situation. Reopening the North Beach Access Road was imperative, but we knew we had to consider all options about how to do this. And in fact, we actually considered the option of not opening it, just to be clear. We really looked at all the available options, and we decided this was, we really did need the two roads. One solution involved removing 30 feet of table land at the northern edge of Forest Park, which would also include removal of a number of trees. The thought of doing this, something called, what would amount to scarring by some who heard about it, was wrenching, but clearly, this was the least expensive, safe option. Another option was more expensive and would save the bluff table land and the trees. We knew we would have to determine quickly which option to undertake, and we decided to see if we could add some independent dollars to the city reserve funds, which we will use to complete the more desirable choice. We reached out initially to Lake Foresters, who had helped with the Forest Park renovation project. Gifts were committed because preserving the park, as it had been built in its recent restoration, was deemed so important. And then an angel stepped forward. As she has done before, Nancy Hughes offered crucial generous support, and in so doing, she helped us realize that we would be able to achieve the $500,000 goal we set out to raise privately, and I think Alderman Morris is going to give you a little bit more detail about that. We are so very grateful to Mrs. Hughes and to all of our donors. The city council unanimously approved the preferred option, which preserves the bluff, the trees, and even creates a safer North Beach Access Road with a spectacular, even more spectacular view of the lake than before. Although we do not plan to continue active fundraising on this project, we will happily accept tax-deductible gifts if you are so inclined. Contact information for either Alderman, Morris, or myself is on the city website. And I'm turning it back to you, Rob.
Yes. Shortly after we began the Access Road fundraising, which Prue stepped right up for in her wonderful way of leadership, right as that all began, I was contacted by a representative of Lake Forest resident Nancy Hughes that she wished to make a donation of $300,000 in support of this optimal and more elegant entrance solution to the beach. Words are hardly sufficient to express the thanks and gratitude of this mayor and certainly other Lake Forest citizens for this truly transformational gift, but try we will. On behalf of all Lake Foresters, present and future, thank you, Nancy Hughes, for your love of Lake Forest and repeated demonstration of this with your bestowals around our fair city. In view of this unconditional generosity and precedence elsewhere in Lake Forest, the mayor makes this council motion to rename the otherwise inelegantly-named North Beach Access Road "The Hughes Gateway, Now and Forever." Is there a second?
Second.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. And back over to Jed Morris, Chair of the Finance Committee, for some other perspectives on this.
Good evening, everyone. We want to express our sincere appreciation to over 20 bluff donors who have contributed almost $650,000, well past our goal, to this effort and to the Gateway Project. Our city's capital budget for infrastructure is always a significant challenge for us, but this effort will enable us to continue to fund our other critical infrastructure projects. The response is wonderful testimony to the generositys of our community, especially when you look at other community gifts that have taken place this year. You can think of Lake Forest College and the Science Center, Lake Forest Northwestern Hospital, Forest Park, Gorton Community Center, which will be up in a little bit to talk about their budget, Elloa Farms, and of course, the Deer Path Golf Course, which is ongoing. Lake Forest would be a much different community without these public-private partnerships. So these gifts enable us to continue to make important reinvestments in our local neighborhoods and sustain our critical municipal assets. So I want to thank all the donors, all 20-plus donors to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jed. So the work is beginning down there. In the spring, it'll be very active, and we have some stretch goals to get it done in July. We'll see. Mother Nature cooperates, we can maybe do that. Otherwise, it'll be August or whatever. Third item I have this evening is that I am in receipt of a letter dated November 2, 2018, that goes like this: Dear Mayor Lansing, we are pleased to notify you that the city of Lake Forest, Illinois, has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the current fiscal year 2019 budget.
Pretty good handle on Tyler already.
Scott, I'd ask if you have a chance to reach out to Susan Banks, our communications manager, because we typically will put on our website when the blue cards are out and bring them to people's attention, because you'd be surprised how many people get them, file them away until they get their tax bill, and then they pull them out, and then it's really too late.
Well...
So I think we'll take you up on your offer because we want to get the word out.
Absolutely, a great idea. And I had several people complain because Shields was the first township to send the blue cards out. I like to get going on stuff. I don't like to sit and wait, and some of the assessors are trying to, you know, they sit back and go, "Well, let's see what's going on in the other townships, and then we'll move forward," and I don't do that. I like to get going right out of the box. And a couple of people came in and said, "You know, these weren't supposed to be out until July." And they came, and like, "Well, no, we got them out early." And once again, for 2019, I'm pretty confident that I'll have the Shields notice, the blue card's out, will probably be the first township that'll open up for the 2019, so we will be early and finish our work. And you're not pressed for time. I mean, the one thing you don't want to do when you're doing this is you're dealing with a lot of numbers and things like that, and you want to make sure that you're fair with everybody that comes in, and if you're opening your township way at the end, then you kind of have to scramble to get it all done, and I just don't think that's right. I'd rather do it from the beginning and make sure that everybody gets a fair chance and that I get to do the appropriate job on the properties that I'm working on, so.
Mr. City Manager, I'm wondering, along the same lines of what you were just saying, is rather than waiting for people to visit our website to get this message out, I'm wondering if we can do an announcement, Susan, that, you know, like you do from time to time to people whose email addresses we have, because this January 1 date is coming upon us very quickly, and I think it's very relevant information, so I really think it's a service to our residents if we can let them know that now is the time to get out there and get ahead of everything.
The cards probably will come out, you know, in end of April, May, somewhere in there, but, you know, the people should really be aware, the assessment date is January 1, 19, so they can start putting all their information together now, and so the notices aren't coming out on January 1. That's just the assessment date.
Right.
But they will be out probably sometime in April or May, and...
Terrific.
It gives you more time to put your information together, and, you know, one thing that, you know, when you get some appraisals, you get some very good appraisals, and you get some that are like, "Where did this come from?" And, you know, the ones that get the "Where did this come from?" don't get a lot of look, and it's kind of like it's going to be a no change. So that's why I say I would like people to start working on it now to make sure they get all their information in and do a very thorough job on getting their case prepared to come to the assessor and the board review.
You know, for further information, individuals who may have had a, gotten a home equity loan recently from a bank, are bank appraisals just as good as having your own done?
For the most part, you know, I mean, because they'll have, you know, comparable sales, and, you know, for the most part, you know, they've tightened up the law on the appraising with all the savings and loan and problems like that that they've had, so. So the appraisals are a little bit higher caliber than they were 10 years ago, so for the most part, you know, we'll take a good look at them and make sure that they're right. The key things are to make sure that you got the physical description of your property right, and, you know, you can check on the county website and see your square footage and things like that. That's where I always tell people to start, is make sure the facts are right, you know, how many bathrooms you got, how many bedrooms you got, basement finished, square footage, frame construction, and the house's brick or whatever it is, but, you know, go through and make sure the facts are right is a good starting spot.
Well, I think the more of that information, too, that we could put out there for residents, I think the more helpful that would be so that they know what they're going for. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Scott, I think also, if you had a chance, you're not doing this already, to connect with traditional media and social media, that 2019 is the quadrennial reassessment. Get that out there now so that people see it so they won't be surprised when other things follow.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for giving me the chance to come, and Rob, thank you for being a great mayor of Lake Forest.
I was...
Listen, thank you.
When I was on the...
You have more impact on Lake Forest than I do.
I don't think so, but I know when I was on the caucus was a great thing, when I served, when I was actually the president of Lake Forest Caucus, but most of these names up here are not strange to me. I know almost everybody here, so.
You're a great citizen, Mr. Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next, our committee reports of the council, starting with Finance Committee and Gorton Community Center 2019 budget presentation to be presented variously by Finance Committee Chair Jed Morris, Tim Hender, Board Chair of Gorton, Amy Wagliardo, Executive Director, and Bill Moskoff, Finance Chair.
Let me just comment to begin. Again, thanks, everyone, for being here. Tonight, we have a budget presentation for the Gorton Community Center. So Tim Hender, Chairman of the Board of Directors for the center and his team, which is Bill Moskoff, who's Finance Chairman, and Amy Wagliardo, who's the Executive Director, are here to provide the overview of the budget. The Gorton Center has been a premier community organization in Lake Forest. It certainly occupies a central place in our town and is incredibly important resource for our city. We have seen the center continue to grow and expand its offering, and I just want to comment, we have the drop-off center, we have a full program of live events, there's a lot of programming of daily events, and then the critically acclaimed film events that Amy's arranged to bring to town. So we're very pleased to have Gorton's team back in front of the city council to talk about their budget. So, Tim?
Thank you. Thanks, Jed. Hi, everybody. My name's Tim Hender. I am the current Board Chairman at the Gorton Community Center. I'm joined tonight by Bill Moskoff, our Finance Chair, and Amy Wagliardo, our Executive Director, who are going to be giving the report tonight, and didn't know I was going to be here on a historic night, first time in front of the city council, but thank you, Bob, for all your service over the years, and Jason, welcome to town. It's a great place to raise your family, so I think you're going to love being here, and thank you for stepping up to do the job that Bob has done so well for many years. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city council. I especially like to thank Jed. Jed has been on our board for three or four years now at the Gorton Community Center. He was Finance Chairman, left that role when he became an alderman, but he still serves as a Board Member-at-Large and has really made a huge impact on the work he's done at Gorton, so thank you. Thank you, Jed. State of the Union at Gorton is strong. We are looking forward to a great 2019 after wrapping up a very, very good 2018, so I'm just going to give you some highlights of what's been going on at Gorton tonight. We're going to look at what the success factors have been for 2018. We're going to talk about 2019 opportunities for growth, and we'll look at the budget. So that everybody knows, the mission of the Gorton Community Center is to be the gathering place and the heart of our community where people connect, converse, learn, listen, play, and perform, and I think we're really, really delivering on our mission. Our tagline is educate, entertain, and inspire. A big thing that's happened at Gorton financially, you know, I'm happy you brought up Mrs. Hughes' name tonight. She was one of the big donors as a part of our Capital Cane campaign three or four years ago, and our auditorium is named the John and Nancy Hughes Theater, and that's had a huge impact on what's happened at Gorton as our film and entertainment has really, really increased over the years. But not only that, I mean, there are kids, there's kids theater, there's all kinds of great events that happen in the auditorium. It can be rented out. We've started a producer program where we've got people in town who say, "Hey, I've got an idea to have this event be performed there, and I'm going to help underwrite it." So there's been a lot of great work of the citizens of town and the board and the team over at Gorton to just really get a lot of growth. Recently, we just had Second City perform there. It was sold out, over 300 tickets sold. It was a very, very successful night for us. We had Griffin House, a country music star from Nashville play, which was a big success about a month or so ago. And so there's always great stuff going on at Gorton. For anybody who hasn't been there, come over and watch a movie. I mean, the cinema is fantastic, the quality of the sound, the quality of the picture, everything that's going on at Gorton, from the programming to the drop-in center. Jed mentioned the drop-in center, huge resource for the community. You know, the people who use that for their young children have gotten a ton out of it. Jason, you might want to use that for your kids.[1554.45][1554.45](LAUGHTER) So a lot of great things going on. Amy specifically has been unbelievable in leading the Gorton Community Center, and I'm just privileged to be a small part of it, being involved with the board. Our endowment, I was looking at our endowment earlier, our endowment, I was looking at it earlier today, our endowment, we have about $4.4 million in our endowment, so financially, we're very strong. We've got $500,000 in cash, in cash-like securities just for emergencies. Our operating account has $175,000 in it, and we've got a line of credit at Lake Forest Bank and Trust of $100,000. Lake Forest Bank and Trust has been a really great partner of ours financially. They help manage the endowment, and that's been one of the real big success stories. Collaboration, we try to collaborate on programming with everybody in town that we can. We found that that not only helps bring great ideas, but it also brings an audience of people from our community to come attend events that we have. If you haven't seen a movie, get your tickets now for the Telluride Mountain Film Festival. It's coming up in January. It's a sellout. It's been a huge success of ours. Just some pictures of some of the great things going on. Block Party was a great event this year. Always new classes that are being started up, and the ones that don't go well, we get rid of them. So, you know, there's a continuous process of new things going on, but the things that go well, we keep for the long term. And then, I don't know if everybody knows this, but the second floor, we've got a lot of tenants. It's almost a nonprofit incubator that we have there. It's nonprofit office space on the second floor. Because of the success of all the programming that's going on, one of those offices, we've got a tenant moving out, and so we're actually utilizing more of that space now for programming just because the programming is really bustling at Gorton. So you have film, family events, and we're going to have language classes for all ages starting in 2019. I'm going to let Amy come up and talk about the budget, but if anybody has any questions about what's going on at Gorton, just give a call over to the Gorton Community Center, send me an email, send Amy an email, give us a call. We're really excited about what's going on, and we're just really looking forward to a great 2019, and we thank the city for their partnership in helping to maintain the building at Gorton. So thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. I'm very lucky to work at Gorton Community Center. I feel very lucky every day to work there. I have an amazing team of people that I get to work with, an amazing board, and we have great relationships with the city, with... Bob has always been such a supporter before I was there, long before I was there, and so many of the people who are sitting in this room really positively affect Gorton on a regular basis, so I'm very thankful for our relationship with the city and all the phone calls, emails that people are willing to take from me to answer questions or discuss something, so I'm very thankful for that. I have an amazing team of people that I get to work with, an amazing board, and we have great relationships with the city, with, Bob has always been such a supporter before I was there, long before I was there. And so many of the, of the people who are sitting in this room really positively affect Gorton on a regular basis, so I'm, I'm very thankful for our relationship with the city and all the phone calls, emails that people are willing to take from me to answer questions or, or discuss something, so I'm very thankful for that. The council has detailed information of our budget in their packet. This is the summary page that's, that is in your packet that is a comparison of the 2019 expected final budget and the 2019 budgeted. We've also prepared for you a five-year budget that goes out further, five years, and that one is in a slightly different format, as requested by the council last year. So, depending on which, I mean, the numbers add up to the same number, obviously, but depending on which format you're looking at, the lines are slightly different. So, but the way that we look at our budget, there's big, there's several big buckets. We have tenant rental income and then event rental income. Those are two revenue budgets. And then we have programs and events, and the drop-in center revenue, and then we have contributions. So, those are where we receive our revenue from, and then obviously, we have expenses related to those, to those that we've netted out on this line, on this budget that's on the screen. And then the number, the big number is the net income from operations. Then, because we have a lot of depreciation on the building currently and temporarily and permanently restricted activity that we put below the line, we just want to make sure that, that, because those are balance sheet items, that we point out what our operations net income is, is expected to be. I'm happy to go into any detail that you wish to go into. I don't want to, I know you have it and you've reviewed it, so I don't want to go line by line, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions from the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, near and dear to my heart is always the drop-in center.
Yes.
Can you just address the, what that, the...
Sure. So, the drop-in center is kind of a, a break-even proposition for us, so depending on the year, it might be a couple thousand ahead or a couple thousand behind. This, we changed the way that we're billing our parents this year and...
That really later in the report.
Yes, so this is really more of a timing issue as far as where we will end up at the end of the year, because the final billing for 2018 will happen January 3rd. So, and then, so as we go forward, we won't see that lag because we'll have 12 months on it, but we started in September a different billing process that allows our families, well, everyone's pre, either pre-billed or on account so that they get a bill on the 15th and the 30th, and then three days later, they're automatically billed, which helps us administratively, but we want to give those families time to look at their bill, and so that's why there's kind of a lag there. But the drop-in center is court, key to our mission, but it's a break-even proposition for us each year.
Yeah, well, it all is...
Yeah.
And if I might just ask you about your fund balances going forward, I think they show, it shows it declining in the 2020, 2021, 22, 23.
Sure.
Does that concern you?
So, the reason that is showing that way is because we have put in the budget a draw, but it's not showing any gains because we don't budget gains on investment, so we don't expect it to turn out that way, but that's the way that we have to show it on a budget. Also, I would like to point out that we budget every year to draw from our two investment account, our two endowment accounts. One's the main endowment, the second one is the Hughes Film Endowment. We definitely draw from the Hughes Film Endowment to support film programming every year. We have done that for the last three years, and we will plan to do that in 2019 as well. We budget the pull, the draw from the other endowment, but so far have not drawn from it so that those funds continue to build as long as, and, you know, we have, we've been working on strategic planning, and it could be that the, the board decides to use those funds for a specific purpose or something, but until it's needed in the budget or we have specific strategic purpose for them, we're letting them roll. So, we don't really expect it to go down, we just expect, or it's just the way that we have to budget for it.
Do you usually budget from the, to, to draw?
Three, 3%.
Right, okay.
Three and a half, sorry, three and a half.
That's our, that's our maximum allotted spending limit is 3 and 1/2% of the endowment as of the fund balance on December 31st and prior to...
Thank you. And also, I should point out, even the Hughes Fund, which we've drawn from every year, is, is, is almost 20% over its current, is original, its original amount, so we're not eating into the corpus of that endowment.
Perfect.
Alderman Beidler?
I, I do, I have actually, it's a, it's a general question. This isn't actually for Amy. I think, Bob, this might be for you. I noticed on page 29, the Directors and Officers Insurance, it's not that it's a big number, I just don't remember seeing that on other reports from like LOL and so on. Does everybody, do each of these groups pay that? I just haven't picked it up before, I guess.
Yeah, every...
Everybody carries it.
Yes. Speaking of Directors and Officers, yes.
So, everybody, everybody carries it.
Everybody is required to carry it, yes.
All right, so that's just, I hadn't picked it up before.
Yeah.
Good, great, good.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. I have a question for our city attorney. Should I refuse myself from the vote since I'm on the Board of Gorton when we vote on the budget?
For voting on the budget?
Except in a...
Yeah, are...
He's, he's on the Gorton Board.
Oh, on, oh, oh, okay.
I'm a member of the Gorton Board.
Yeah, how have you dealt with that before?
Well, it hasn't occurred to me before.
Yeah.
But I thought I should bring it up tonight.
Yeah, I think it's probably a safe bet to do that. We can look into the, whether or not there's a legal prohibition, but I think from a...
From this is that tonight, it's probably good to recuse yourself. I would expect the votes will be there to approve the budget if you're not needing them.
Yeah, but let's look into it, because, you know, it's kind of an interesting question, actually, yeah.
I, I would like to turn it over to my Finance Chair, Bill Moskoff, who would like to just speak a little bit about the budget process.
The, the Finance Chair on the Gorton Board has a, has a dual role. On the one hand, I'm a full participant on the Board in all decision-making. On the other hand, I'm also a spectator in this process because I'm a City Director, and in essence, I'm the watchdog for the council on what goes on regarding finances at Gorton Community Center. So, tonight, I'm wearing my watchdog hat. And I would say to you that I am a participant in the budget creation in the sense that I work with Amy and query her on what items in the budget are. We have a very active Finance Committee on the Board, and that committee vets the budget. We've also had a meeting with the City Manager and with Jed as regard the budget. My view of this budget, it is, is that it is a conservative budget. It, in essence, is a, something of a 3% increase over the last budget. The very good news, of course, is that Gorton Community Center has a ton of money right now. We're in wonderful financial shape. And the second piece of this is that we're a cash operation, and net income from operations is, is positive. It has been for the last few years, and our projection is, the projection is that it will be even more so next year. And so, in my view, the council should support this. It, I, in my view, is, is an unassailable budget, and it's very defensible, and that's what I have to say. And, is there any questions? I'm happy to defer them to somebody else.
Alderman Moreno has a question.
Nothing I love better than a good process. So, Mr. Moskoff, please, if you would, what would you improve on in the budgeting process at Gorton? Are there, is there any room for improvement?
Uh, I don't see any defects. It's a, a very thoughtful process. It's well-considered. Amy works, Amy Wagliardo works with our accountant, unfortunately, our outgoing accountant, Lisa Adams, and it's done very thoughtfully, and then I come in and go over it and talk to Amy about anything that I, is not clear to me. I don't see any weaknesses in this.
Thank you.
Very good. Other questions? If not, I'll turn it back to you for...
Thank you. With regard to this budget presentation of the Gorton Community Centers, are any comment from someone in the audience this evening about this?
Mr. Mayor, the only comment I would make is despite Bill's comments where they got boatloads of money, people are still encouraged to give to Gorton.
Yes. The never-ending chain of benefactors is always needed across our fair city. So, with regard to the budget presentation, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Gorton Community Center calendar 2019 annual budget and plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So, roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Yes.
Recuse. Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, still under Finance Committee, is consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2018 tax levy. This is the second reading and final approval to be presented by Elizabeth Hollab, City Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. It, it seems like you've been talking about the tax levy for a while. You have. And, and either the capacity of the Finance Committee or the City Council, this is the sixth meeting since September, that you have discussed and considered issues related to the 2018 property tax levy. So, this evening, we are requesting that the City Council consider adoption and final approval of the ordinance establishing the 2018 tax levy. I will not go through the presentation in detail. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I just want to point out a couple of things. We heard from Mr. Hilton earlier in the meeting a little bit about the assessed valuations. The, the one takeaway from this slide is that currently, the county is projecting a 1.39% increase in the overall assessed valuation of the city. So, not a lot of increase, and of course, that takes all five townships and aggregates them and looks at Lake Forest globally. The next is a lot of detail, and I'll pass on that and just show the roll-up. The one change that has been made since two weeks ago when you approved first reading of the ordinance is the transition from the Corporate Fund, the General Corporate Fund, to Capital Improvements, an amount of $915,000. This was discussed in detail at last Monday's Capital Budget Workshop, and the direction provided was to move the sanitation fee from the Capital Fund to the General Fund and make a similar transfer of tax levy revenue from the General Fund to the Capital to better align the revenue with what it is funding, the operating budget of the sanitation division. So, the two cells that are highlighted in yellow just show that change, and so from a year-to-year basis, you actually see a reduction in the levy in the General Fund and a significant increase in the Capital Improvement Levy, but that is simply due to the transition in those dollars. This shows the impact on an average household of $800,000 in Lake Forest. It takes the recommended levy and the estimated assessed valuation and projects that an average $800,000 home will see an $87 or 2.64% increase in the portion of their tax bill related to the city and the library, which represents about 22% in total of the tax bill. This is an updated chart showing how the property tax revenue is allocated to different functions, and this reflects the transfer of the $915,000 from General to Capital Improvements. And so, you see how much of the tax levy goes to the different areas, General Operating, Pension, Parks and Recreation, Capital Improvements, the Library, and Debt Service. Happy to answer any questions related to the levy, but at this time, we would recommend approval of the ordinance establishing the 2018 levy.
Yes, we have been over this many times. The annual budget cycle's about an 11-month process for staff and for council, so many meetings, many vettings of one thing or another. If there are no...
One, one quick one. The, the transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Fund, is that a permanent transfer? In other words, in future years, we will see that trend continue?
Yes. Well, from a year-to-year standpoint, the percentage increases will reflect that transfer, and yes, it is expected to be permanent.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I would, is there any comment from anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion to grant final approval of, of the ordinance establishing the 2018 tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, in a related manner, is approval of ordinances abating the 2018 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues. This is also a second reading and final approval, mostly administrative, and Elizabeth will explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you six ordinances abating the debt service levy. The city has traditionally issued all of its debt as general obligation debt, allowing the city to benefit from the AAA bond rating and achieve the lowest interest rate possible on borrowings. However, oftentimes, those bonds are intended to be paid off from alternate revenue sources and not the debt service levy. So, this table shows the, the different bond issues currently outstanding and what the total debt service is for those, expected to be an FY '20. And then the columns to the right show the different funding sources intended to pay a portion or all of the debt service related to those individual bond issues. And then what that does is nets out to the $1,653,000 that was included on the previous table, aggregating the, the total property tax levy for 2018. So, these are simply six ordinances abating or reducing the debt service levy and providing the county direction to reduce the debt service levy associated with those bond issues.
Thank you. Any questions? Just sort of hand in glove with the prior issue. Any questions, comments from the audience on this matter? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to grant final approval of the ordinances abating tax levies for various general obligation bond issues.
So moved. Second.
Uh, so, roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
And then lastly, also related to the foregoing, is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and, and other ordinance adopting new fees related to public works. This is a second reading and final approval. Elizabeth, please enlighten us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This table remains unchanged from first reading, granted on November 19th. However, you did grant the first reading in advance of a detailed discussion, which we did have at the Capital Budget Workshop last Monday. Due to the change in date for the budget workshop, it came after first reading. But you have an ordinance adjusting the fee schedule. You see those highlighted. It's 18 pages, the fee schedule, so we highlight those that are changing. Green are not actual changes, they're just confirming either code language or current practice, and those are highlighted. The yellow are proposed increases in the current fee. You can see the current fee and the proposed fee, as well as the dollar and percentage change anticipated over the course of the annual fiscal year. And those, your packet included supplementals from, supplemental memos from each department explaining the justification for those adjustments. You have one item that is orange, and that is an actual new fee proposed, which requires an additional ordinance. You have an ordinance recommended by the Public Works Department to create a water meter contractor bond fee. That is really a deposit that is refunded upon return of the water meter, which is why there is no additional revenue anticipated from that fee. As noted here, water consumption fees are not yet included in the fee schedule, and based on the conversation at the budget workshop last week, we will actually be bringing additional fee recommendations in January to the City Council for water rates, the sanitation fee, and sales tax, based on the conversation last Monday. and sales tax, based on the conversation last Monday. So those are yet to come and are not included in the approval this evening. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you have two ordinances before you recommended for approval.
Elizabeth, you mentioned the different coloring at the meeting for it, but there are some under the water sales and sewer charges that are in blue. Could you explain what the blue references?
Yeah, the blue was because those are still pending, and we were not recommending anything this month in the fee schedule based on the need to have a more detailed discussion with the council last Monday. So those fees will be incorporated into a new ordinance and a new fee schedule that will come back to the council on January 22nd for first reading and February 4th for final approval.
This discussion beyond the sanitation fee that we did talk about?
Right. So the sanitation fee would also be folded into that, right.
Our work is not done yet. Any other questions or comments on this? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this particular matter? Sir, please come to the... Please, so we can all hear.
Dennis Smallman's 1100 Sir William Lane, and it actually relates to the water fees. I've been pretty sensitive to this because my wife actually asked how come our water bill went up so much this year. So I went back and I looked over the last 10 years, what's happened to my water bill, and in the last five years, it's up 45%. I'd ask when you review the fee schedule for the water, that Elizabeth shares with you five years of rate increases, not just year-over-year increases. Because I think you are... I know you're hiding all the extra fees on the water bill rather than putting it on the tax roll. And I've expressed this issue at every ward meeting this past year, that that should be on the tax bill, not on the water bill. But 45% increase in five years on a water bill is pretty high. In this last year, I don't think I used nearly as much as I had previously because it was such a wet year. I just ask that you get all the information before you decide on what to do with that fee.
Thank you. I would say it's hiding in plain sight because it's all labeled. One feature of the water bills is that when one thinks of fees and taxes and so forth, is what's the equitable way to spread that around or to have the appropriate parties pay for it? And one thing the water bill does is that it's by household. So it's not on individuals, it's not on, you know, particular users, but every household has water, so it's the simplest way for us to get there. And yes, there are some other fees on there besides water, but it's... They're all enumerated and in plain sight. I have a motion to grant final approval of the proposed ordinances.
So moved. Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address counsel on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like... I've got one request from a Paul Hammond in Lake Forest to speak.
Paul Hammond, 511 Beverly, lifetime resident of Lake Forest. I have two concerns. Number one is the market risk of the $140 million in the three city pensions. Number two is the $40 million deficit in those pensions. My first concern is that in 2012, corporate profits were $2 trillion, and the Dow Jones was at $12,000. Today, six years later, corporate profits are still $2 trillion, but the Dow Jones has doubled to $24,000. Here, you can see corporate profits. In 2009, the Dow Jones was at $6,000. Corporate profits doubled, you went to $12,000 with the Dow Jones. Now, six years later, the market has doubled, but corporate profits have not moved. So if the Dow Jones were to revert to the 2012 Dow Jones level, I estimate the city pension balance are at risk to the tune of about $70 million. The Federal Reserve has their hand on the scale, making the bond market very problematic. The city might not have direct control over the pension funds, but they do have an indirect or fiduciary responsibility for the proper oversight of the funds. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We're very conscious of all those issues, I assure you. Finance Committee Chair.
Alderman Newman and I are two of a subcommittee for the issue of the pension fund. And just to make sure everybody understands, we have two pension commissions, one monitoring the fire pension and the second one monitoring the police. And they in turn hire outside advisors who are recognized professionally for just that role. So I think we have good oversight, not to dismiss the worry about the potential downsides of the stock market. Alderman Newman and I talk about that a lot and what that might do to the... our pension contributions, but at the moment, I think we have a pretty good oversight in terms of what's going on in our pension funds, but...
I would add that you make reference to us having at least indirect control. We have no control whatsoever, and that's just the way the state does these things. So we have zero input on investment policy. We have zero input or any kind of control over decisions made by the fire and police pension boards. Those are independent bodies. Each city has their own police and fire pension board. So we have zero input whatsoever in those matters. It's all determined by Springfield.
Thank you. All right, any others? Seeing none, item number five on the agenda, items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 12 tonight. First is approval of the November 19, 2018 City Council meeting minutes. Approval of the check register for the period October 27th and November 21st of this year. Third, approval of an issuance of a Class C2 liquor license to MGC and Family LLC. Number four, approval of a sublease agreement and substantially de forma attached here, too, between the City of Lake Forest and Hansa Coffee Roasters to occupy a portion of the CBD train station at 714 North McKinley. And authorization to the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk to proceed in executing the agreement, subject to final approval by Union Pacific. Number five, approval of the declaration of city equipment as surplus, allowing for its disposition and use of the disposal proceeds to purchase a vehicle from the Chevy Exchange for use by the Lake Forest Police Department's Investigations Unit. Number six, waive the city's bidding process and approve the purchase of a new fire engine to be built by Marion Incorporated, not to exceed $525,000. Number seven, authorization to expend up to $60,000 for repainting, lettering, and repairs to the two-used fire apparatus that were recently acquired from the Rockland Fire Protection District. Number eight, consideration of adoption of updated versions of the previously adopted state and national life safety and building codes used by the city. This would be final approval. Number nine, approval to waive the bid process and authorize John Keno and Company the repair of two ravine projects in the total amount of $169,268. Ten, approval to waive the bid process and authorize an emergency lining of a water main to furpal construction in the amount of $59,880. Eleven, waiver of bid and approval to enter into an agreement with Baxter and Woodman for design and specifications of the Forest Hill Water Main in the amount of $30,000. And twelve, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This would be first reading, and if desired by council, a final approval, as we usually do. Is there any item that a council member would like removed or taken separately? If not, any questions on facts and figures? Please.
Let you finish, sorry.
Please.
Not to take out, I just want to express enthusiasm for the Hansa Coffee Roasters coming into the train station. That space has been empty for a while, and I've had the pleasure of sampling that product in Lake Bluff, and it's fantastic. And to have it so close, it means, you know, those of us who use that station can get there, you know, much, much later and make our train and have good coffee. I'm not saying Starbucks isn't great, it's just more... You have to get there a lot earlier to get Starbucks and get back over and get on there. Anyway, wonderful. Do we have some Hansa people here tonight? Anybody?
Great. We'll speak, yeah.
I didn't know that, but when I saw you right up, I thought it was a possibility.
My name's Tom Eglet, I'm one of the co-owners. I'm the co-owner of Hansa Coffee.
I'm Kevin Kane, I'm the other owner.
With 12 items on this agenda tonight, I want to just open it up to questions if you had any concerns for us.
Great.
I think coffee is less important than...
Lot closer to my house and my place of work. I could be there.
You want to give an overview of what your plans are and when you plan to open? You've got airtime now, you might as well use it.
Right. Well, so if you're familiar with our company, we don't like to go into the kind of cookie cutter new construction. We always look for older buildings with character. And when I saw this train station, when the... when that became an option for us, and we met with the representatives from the city, we just kind of fell in love with it right away. And what we're planning to do with it is not a whole lot, other than make it a coffee shop. We want to keep the bank feel, we want to keep the historic nature of the train station. When you walk in there, we're... To give you a great example, the check write counter is becoming the cream and sugar station. So we're... You know, we love old buildings, we love to preserve the history of old buildings, and you got two history buffs right here. And so we want to make it a community gathering space where people from the college, commuters can get a coffee. But also, most importantly, because it's a mission statement of our company to promote community, we want it to be a place where people can see it as an information exchange and a place to maybe stop and talk to your neighbors for four or five minutes in the morning, so.
Tom, do you want to give some background on your attachment to the community?
Yeah, I was born in Lake Forest. I've been... I've lived all over the country, but I've always kind of considered Lake Forest home. My wife Alexandra, her great uncle was Frank Farwell, if many of you remember him. So two... We got two mayors in the family. I'm not interested in your job, though. I like the coffee business way too much.
Assume the coffee business is better paying. What sort of hours are you looking for?
I think we're going to kind of mirror other stores, I think, a 5:30 or 6:00 a.m. opening, and we can kind of see, I think what we'll see is some evening student traffic from the college. It gives them a place to kind of get off campus and meet. So I think an 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. closing would be the smart thing there.
Fully staffed through that whole day.
Fully staffed, correct.
When will you open, do you think?
We're hoping to be open by March.
Okay. Excellent, perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Free advertising. Right, please.
On the agenda, we have a few items that are asking to waive the bid process, and they all have justification for doing that. And some we've talked about, in particular, as to the numbers and the reasonableness for the numbers that are being considered here tonight. There are two that I felt that maybe be good and helpful if we can have Mike Thomas expand on the fairness and reasonableness of the two fees. And the one I'm referring to first is the ravine repair with Keno, and the other is the water main engineering work by Baxter and Woodman. And again, could you give us comfort as to the numbers that are being proposed for approval tonight are, in your estimation, fair and reasonable?
Ray, I have a... I have an issue with that, too. I wonder if I should state that now, as long as Mike's up there? Have you ever...
No problem, I'll defer to my colleague.
I spoke with Mike earlier today about this, so this is... Would be no surprise, but, you know, a couple of meetings ago, it seems to me we had like three waiver-bid requests, and I thought to myself, geez, you know, I thought we were kind of going in the other direction. And then the last meeting, I think, City Council, we had probably about three more on there, and I thought to myself, you know, I'm going to say something, and I don't know, I kind of never get around to a lot of that stuff. And then today, when I was... Yesterday, when I was doing my homework, you know, I came across five separate bid-waiver requests. And the dollar value of those five is like $800,000. A lot of money. You know, I'm reminded that, you know, a good purchasing process generally results in the best pricing. And I'm concerned that with these constant bid waivers, that we're not getting... We're not getting the best pricing. And I know we have a lot on our agenda, and I know it's... There's a tendency that when we know we want to do something, let's move forward with it, and let's move forward quickly, quickly, and because we want to meet some timelines, et cetera. So we go to somebody that we know and trust, and Mike says to him, I suppose, hey, you know, either the Public Works or City Council wants to move forward, can you give us a proposal for this, so that we can... So that I can take it to council, you know, and get approval? Well, it just seems to me that you never get good pricing when you do things like that. You know, more importantly, I think, it's contrary to the commitment that we made to ourselves, you know, four, five, six months ago, you know, to improve our purchasing policy and process. And while I'm not going to get in the way of any of these five tonight, I just wanted to bring it up because I think we have a need to reaffirm our commitment to live within the policies and constraints on our purchasing policy that we all agreed to in, say, I don't know, April, April, May-ish, so. I'd ask us to do it, let's... All collectively, and I've told Mike today, I don't... This isn't Mike's fault. I think he gets pulled from here, and he gets pulled from there, and he gets pulled from somebody else. And he's just trying to do what best he can to serve all of our needs, but I think we all need to work collectively to do a better job at this. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Jack.
So, go ahead.
There's a question.
I'm trying to remember the question back to the... To Mr. Bushman, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, with regards to the ravine projects specifically, we have had multiple large-scale and rather small-scale projects that we do have pricing on, that we're able to compare what our unit costs are compared to the proposal that we received. The challenge with the second, there's two projects that we're requesting approval for. Water plant is relatively straightforward, the access is easy. Second project, which is more costly, is a very challenging ravine to access. The company has told us they're going to need to rent a crane and essentially lower the material and the equipment down in. I'm not sure how their personnel are going to get down in the ravine, but all that will need to come back up. So as I've spoken before multiple times, trying to find contractors that are able and interested in doing work in the ravine is challenging, because quite frankly, they can make a lot more money putting sewer pipe in the ground or paving roads or constructing roads. So with the limited number of large and small-scale projects that we have, we're able to compare the pricing, and I confirm that, yes, it is fair pricing that we have received. It is not excessive.
Well, Mike, I think in light of Alderman Reisenberg's question, maybe articulate a little more about the process with the ravines, because we actually did bid it out.
Sure. The... We have three ravine projects, two of which we're asking for approval this evening. The third one, we are going to delay till next fiscal year simply because of funding. But we did have a traditional engineering design and specification... But we did have a traditional engineering design and specifications put together. We put those three ravine projects out to bid, had a bid opening August 23rd. We had one bidder provide us a bid. We did some research into the company. Their website was under construction. All we could find out from them, from various, when we typed their name in, is that they primarily handle road construction. They didn't have any ravine experience whatsoever. We're not sure they visited the sites either. So, we had one bid. We did not accept that bid and we decided to wait till late in the fall to rebid it. We sent it out again, bid it. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting this time, where we actually had five or six contractors show up. We had the bid opening on October 25th. No one submitted a bid. Some of them said they were busy, others just, for whatever reason, chose not to pursue it. So, yes, we have bid these ravine projects through our process twice, but this evening to proceed and recommend Keno, we would actually have to officially waive the bid process and authorize the work to them.
And I should add that the reason that Keno was, made further inquiry is at the request of the Public Works Committee. Hearing that there were no interested bidders, knowing that this work needed to get done, we were at risk and the sooner it can get done, the better. Knowing they are doing work in the bluff area and have heavy equipment there and have the experience, we encourage Mike to reach out to them and see if they can get a bid in for them. And that was the result of that.
Correct.
If I may, thank you. You know, Mike, I know we've been talking about the ravines and we will continue to be talking about ravines, I'm sure, for quite some time to come. Because they are special geographies, maybe we need to think differently about how we go to market on bidding projects. Maybe ravines shouldn't be segregated or they should be viewed geographically similar to what we're doing with the North Beach Access Road, soon to be renamed. Maybe we need to think more about where we have construction equipment and how we might leverage that in a geographical sense, regardless of project, I realize it's probably different equipment, but I would just ask you to consider that for the future.
Yeah, and we can absolutely do that. We typically will have at least one water main project a year. And if, in fact, we're doing open cut and that type of project is in the vicinity, absolutely, we can consider that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there is another one item, the Baxter and Woodman design engineering
work for the water main. Could you comment on the pricing for that and how you feel that maybe is fair and reasonable?
As we've noted, Baxter Woodman, we went through the RFP process and hired Baxter Woodman, I want to say it was about 12 or 15 months ago. They have completed approximately 90 or 95% of the design for the storm sewer work on Old Elm Timber and Forest Hill. At last Friday's, or excuse me, last Monday's budget meeting, the finance committee requested that we pursue that project, but to do that, we noted that the water main needed to be installed at the same time, up on Forest Hill. Good amount of that area has new water main, except from Timber up to Linden. So, we contacted Baxter Woodman, asked if they would provide us a proposal for design. They did. Typically, when we have design proposals, they range between 7 and 10%. This is 6%. So, it's a little bit lower, which is good, because they have a good amount of data already. So, that is our reason and justification to say, the company has a good amount of surveying points, they have elevations, they have grades, they have the locates of the various utilities on Forest Hill. Makes all the sense in the world to ask them for a proposal. So, that was our process and it's in front of you this evening.
I would just make my usual ravine comment that Mother Nature owns these ravines and these are 60% slopes. There really is no conventional means of construction to access them, to do various water channeling or, you know, inlets, outlets and that sort of thing. And so, you're left with cranes and baskets and, or very arduous, long, alternate paths to get into these sites. And I think when you ask for fixed bids, which we like to do, and you do have very unconventional work in unconventional places, companies are adverse to the risk of losing money. And therefore, you get huge amounts of bids sometimes, but you also draw construction companies that aren't really qualified to do it. So, there's, part of the good purchasing process we have in this town is to make sure that it's a reasonable bid, they know what they're doing, they're qualified to do the work, it will get done and not fall back on the town, on the city in some way. So, it's a, these ravines are its own world and the story continues there, as I'm sure the Public Works Committee agrees.
But, Mr. Mayor, I would say to follow up on Alderman Reisenberg's comments, we hear you. And I think the staff knows that unless they have sound justification, like you've just heard from Mike Thomas, that they're going to be taken to task by the council at future bids. So, they're aware of that, but we hear you.
That's all I was saying.
Yeah.
I have one more.
Sir?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make the budget workshop on Monday. And I have some concerns about the proposed home rule, retail, sales tax increase.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
We are in the middle of an omnibus.
Well, this is on the omnibus.
It is?
This is on the omnibus agenda.
Sales tax?
Yeah. It's a proposed funding, it's going to be a proposed funding mechanism for the project that we just talked about, the, what is it, the?
The Baxter Woodman Water Main.
Yeah.
Indirectly.
Well, indirectly, okay.
Well, I could have brought it up under this, but I thought this was on the omnibus agenda, so I thought, you and I talked about it and I know that there's not, anyhow, hear me out.
Go on.
Thank you. I do have some concerns about the proposal, you know, to fund the Old Elm, the Forest Old Elm Storm Sewer and Water Main Project. And my concerns are really kind of threefold. Number one, this is a tax. And my economic principle regarding taxes is when you do it, you generally get less of it. And I do have some concerns, they're not deep concerns regarding that. My second and the third are a little more concerning to me. To me, it seems to be somewhat working in cross purposes with what Michael Schreiber is doing in Market Square. And he's done a tremendous job at restoring Market Square. He's done a lot of work on bringing in new businesses. Recent success is the Lululemon acquisition, I'll say, which is just a tremendous accomplishment on his port. Which leads me then to number three is, to me, this tax increase is sending a, even though I've spoken with Rob today, I spoke with Jed before and I've spoken with a couple of others, and I know and I understand that it's very difficult to fight back on the justification, but I still believe it sends a questionable message to existing and potential retailers regarding the city's commitment to Market Square and the fact that we have these retailers' backs. And I'd like to ask one thing, knowing that, and I don't necessarily want, looking for a whole lot of discussion tonight, but we have a lot of time between now and January the 22nd. So, I'd like to ask us, or maybe it's perhaps Elizabeth or whomever, to give some consideration, other ways to finance this and other capital projects, particularly, I think, a more of a use of user fees as opposed to taxes to finance these capital projects.
I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind. I know we're not...
Okay, fine.
So, I came away from the last meeting with an uneasy feeling. I didn't particularly like the increased sales tax. And I thought we really missed the boat on one opportunity. And I'm just going to touch on it, because we can circle back to this at a more appropriate time. But Elizabeth had, I talked to her today, and she had an attachment to her email last week preceding the budget meeting. And on page 78 was one pager on sanitation fee increase. And we talked about an increase, but I asked her about water and sewer, that's an enterprise fund, so it stands alone on its own. Revenues and expenses roughly equal each other. On the sanitation side, we have a cost budgeted of $2.4 million and some of that comes from the general fund. Our revenue on the sanitation side is only $650,000. That's a gap of $1.75 million. I think if we raise the sanitation fee, that would allow us to convert sanitation to an enterprise fund also, or merge it with water and sewer, we have a chance to capture $1.75 million in revenues and we can hold the line on property taxes. We would be immune to a property tax freeze. And the increase on a monthly bill would be from $8 to $32. I don't think anybody's going to, for the privilege of having somebody come down their driveway and pick up garbage twice a week, that's $32 a month for eight trips down your driveway, that's $4 a trip. I don't think anybody's going to complain about that. So, I think maybe we could stand a re-circle on this issue in January. And now I'll shut up and let, get to the vote.
No, that's fine. It's...
I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just looking for consideration.
Yeah, as I said earlier, the budget is far from locked up and the means, the revenue side is not locked up either. We had a, of this folks there, I mean, as Tim said, we sort of coalesced around it and you've got to sleep on these things. If we should open it up again and look at it, there's a number of ways to attack these revenue needs that we have for a substantial amount of capital improvements around the city. And also frankly, to, in a global way, to further insulate as best we can ourselves from the vagaries of the state.
Mr. Mayor?
All that said...
Well, I just have a request that, much like the comments from Alderman Newman and Reisenberg, if there are other questions regarding those three sources that we talked about at the budget meeting, to let Elizabeth Ryan know, so we can be prepared for the 22nd. Because I think Alderman Reisenberg, to your question, if we looked at a storm water management fee, Mr. Schreiber would be much more severely impacted than a sales tax fee. Because it's based on impervious surface and Market Square is basically all impervious surface. And I think we could show you what a sanitation fee would be. We did hear a complaint about the water bill going up and that's where the sanitation fee is.
Right.
And so, people don't look at it as sanitation fee, they think it's part of their water bill. So, I think, you know, it's a question as to...
It's all philosophical, right?
It is.
Right.
And, you know, the, there's a quote I use in my budgeting class that says, taxation is really the art of plucking as many feathers with the minimal amount of hissing. And that's basically what we're looking at here, because you are effectively trying to raise a certain amount of money and it just becomes, who is going to pay that money? And so, I think what would be helpful for Elizabeth and I in preparation for the meeting on January 20th is, are there other issues like sales tax or sanitation that we can be prepared to address that evening, so that there's a full transparent discussion that evening? Because somebody is going to be impacted. And you want to make sure that whoever that constituency group is, is fully aware of the conversation and the breadth of conversation that you've had.
I think something that was persuasive to me when we were having that discussion was looking at the sales tax in our surrounding communities. So, please, when we have the additional discussion, can we be sure and have that chart again? That was persuasive to me, so.
Yeah, and any evidence about the fact that non-Lake Foresters pay XYZ percent of that sales tax.
Right.
And we were pretty deliberate in not, we know other communities do restaurant and beverage and so on. And we said, we don't have enough of that in this town, we don't want to discourage that. I mean, just, and I know, I'm sorry, we noticed that you weren't there, Jack, because you're always such an able and informed presence when you are, but it was a four-hour meeting. I mean, we didn't, these were not throwaway suggestions. This was a look at, you know, the capital is just hanging over our heads all the time, our capital needs. And, you know, and we plan carefully, we budget carefully, we take, you know, the city's money, which is really taxpayers' money, we take it incredibly seriously, but something happens like that bluff slide and there, you know, you're just socked. And we had no, you know, fortunately, we have reserves. But I think, you know, when we looked at it, we were like, okay, we have to plan. There are also people who think we can't expect the economy to last the way it is. We got to be ready going forward to make some decisions. So, we actually had a pretty in-depth discussion about what possibilities were, and these looked like the most palatable. So, I think we can do that again, but I'd like to think we're going to build on some of the conversation we had. People may have rethought, but let's maybe bring back that map was, I agree with Melanie, that's the thing that I looked at and I was like, okay, this is, we got to, you know, it's crazy, we don't have to be as low as we are and so forth, so.
This is even something that could get workshopped.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, it can take a number of hours to crank through all this, so that's another thought. So, budget is never done until it's done.
I'm through for this evening, by the way.
Thank you, Jack. No, Jack, don't you ever stop.
And we could push all of this discussion off until February 1st too, if you wanted to. Whatever you want.
Or, or the second meeting, you may.
You're right. Nice try.
Nice try. All right. All that commentary being heard and duly taken note of, is there a motion to approve the 12 omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And there is a second. It's the roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Precious.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight aces, a motion carries.
Last is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. And this is not coffee roasting, it's not really roasting in general, but it's, it will be by the time we're done. This is a consideration of a resolution naming the patio at the Deer Path Golf Course in honor of Robert R. Kylie Jr., golf aficionado, knowing few peers. Whereas Robert R. Kylie will have served the city of Lake Forest from November 1990 to January 2019. I was 43 then. Whereas the city of Lake Forest has celebrated a large number of significant accomplishments occurring during Mr. Kylie's tenure. And whereas Mr. Kylie recognized the community benefits of a municipal golf course. And whereas Mr. Kylie has worked with city council and staff to accommodate the regional demand for increased and improved services, as well as the substantial modernization of the golf course. And whereas the city of Lake Forest City Council has determined that it is highly appropriate for the city to recognize the decades of Mr. Kylie's unparalleled service, leadership, and contributions under his supervision. Now therefore be it resolved that for his legacy of leadership in the city of Lake Forest, that the Deer Path Golf Course Clubhouse Patio shall be named and shall hereafter be referred to as the Bob Kylie Patio. God, that sounds wonderful. Be it further resolved, the city council offers its sincere appreciation to Robert R. Kylie Jr. and wishes many celebrations on the patio. The metaphors here run wild. And asks that the city clerk be and is hereby directed to give a copy of this resolution, duly signed by the mayor, to Robert R. Kylie Jr., with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the December 3, 2018 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Robert R. Kylie, come forward.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
So, Matt, a lot of glasses tipped.
Let's get one just like that.
Are you going to put a name?
Manatee jacket. Put that inside the clubhouse.
Thank you very much. Great to see you.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we might get a copy of, get exactly what he has, not take his, but get one of those to actually have at the patio at the clubhouse?
Yes. Would the city clerk see to that?
In charge of that, but it's such a nice resolution, I think it'd be great.
I think we also need a, something on the outside, too, on the actual patio itself.
We'll have a name.
No, I mean a sign or something.
We'll be okay.
That would be appropriate.
In fact, let's go practice hoisting one with an adjournment, there being no further business.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.